Now that we have the forum here, I'm going to start because we're a couple of minutes late fooling around with this Zoom. But for all intents and purposes, this is the Southampton Planning Board meeting of September 16th, 2020. All members are present. Keith Locke, Paul Fergal, Cindy Palmer, Dan LaBalle, and myself. This meeting has been, is being videotaped by Charter Channel 191 in East Hampton. And to begin this meeting, the first item agenda is a special permit application for an adult-use marijuana facility at 15 College Highway. And I will read the public hearing notice that was published in the Daily Hampshire Gazette on September 1st and 8th. I also personally mailed the abutter notices, which there were only 10. And the applicant, I have received the $1,200 application fee that accompanied the permit application. So now I will read the public hearing notice as it was sent to the abutters and in the newspaper. Just bear with me a moment. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, Southampton Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on Wednesday evening, September 16th, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. virtually via Zoom ID, password, et cetera, to consider the special permit application of Vulcan LLC doing business as Dreamer to conduct a retail marijuana establishment at 15 College Highway Unit G2, better known as the Red Rock Shops in Southampton, Mass. This is in accordance with the zoning bylaw, Section 18, Adult-Use Marijuana, also known as an RMD. Anyone wishing to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place noted above, or they can view a application requested in advance by emailing SouthamptonPlanningBoard@gmail.com. Paul Deeman Chair, and it's published September 1st through 8th. So what we're going to do this evening is we're going to have the applicant, let me just see if there's anybody else going to join here, waiting to join. Not yet. We're going to ask the applicant to present, and then I will call on our consultant Larry Smith to respond, and we'll ask the board for comment. The public will be asked to comment. But I would ask now, Ezra, so I don't pronounce your name wrong, I'd like you to introduce who is here tonight representing Dreamer and who will be doing the presenting.
Yes, thank you, Paul. My name is Ezra Parsibok. I am a consultant helping cannabis businesses navigate the process of this interval between medical marijuana and adult-use marijuana. I'm here representing Vulcan Politol, who is my client, also resident of Southampton and owner of Molina's Restaurant in Northampton, as well as Kevin Pear, who is the builder for the project, and Brian, forgive me, don't have your last name, is the security consultant doing our security profile for the location. And I will be presenting the conditions and findings of the special permit this evening.
Very good. So I will ask you then to continue, I don't know what kind of a presentation you have, whether it's a PowerPoint or however you want to present it, but the floor is yours at this point.
Great, I appreciate it. So it is a PowerPoint presentation, so I have a share screen button at the bottom, and I'm going to click it and attempt to share my screen. Anybody should let me know if they're not seeing it. And Paul, I don't know who's doing the tech stuff, but it should work. And what I'm going to do is go through just what's required in the Southampton bylaw in terms of adult-use marijuana, what's required to submit for the application, the findings that are required to pass a permit in the adult-use bylaw, as well as some of the conditions that exist in the standard Southampton zoning bylaw.
Ezra, do you want me to hit my share screen, or are you going to?
So I'm going to do that now, let's see what happens. All right, I assume everyone could see my Dreamer special permit application, slide one.
Very good, thank you.
Great. So Vulcan Politol, so I'll just start at the beginning here. Our application materials include various things. So the first few slides, sort of three sections here, the first few slides are just images of every document that we submitted for the special permit. I'm going to go through various aspects of the bylaw and how we comply with those. I will show the site plan, security plan, floor plan drawings, line queue plan, traffic study, things like that. It's a pretty small group, I saw that there's about 15 people, and I'm happy to, if anyone is confused as I'm going on the slide, I'm happy to do that. There's about 30 slides, so I can also get to the end, and then you're welcome to ask questions. Just a brief introduction about myself. So I am based in Northampton myself. Northampton has the largest number of host agreements with cannabis companies in the state. And I, my primary expertise is the use of medical cannabis with patients, but I'm also a consultant in the field, helping with business development, advising both business owners and towns, et cetera, on just getting these shops open and going through the state and local licensing process. So I'm helping Vulcan, my friend and client on this, who is, lives at 5 Nicholas Lane in Southampton. One of the application requirements is our host agreement with the town, which is signature page here, as you can see. The host agreement is essentially the legal state-required agreement between Southampton and the operator, in this case Vulcan LLC DBA Dreamer. The host agreement provides a 3% gross sales tax to the town, as well as a 3% community impact fee. So right off the bat here, 6% of the gross sales of the establishment goes right back to the town coffers. This, one of the requirements is to have a provisional license. So the provisional license is your license on paper, takes about 12 months to go through the process at the state, and we achieved our license in July. It also requires a copy of registration as a medical marijuana dispensary. So this is an adult-use dispensary, this is not a medical dispensary. The only difference, there's no difference in product, the only difference is this serves all adults within Massachusetts and beyond, over 21, and cannot serve medical patients. So medical patient over 21, yes, but anyone with a medical card, they go to a specific medical dispensary. Here is our proof of liability insurance. Site control, just the first page here, between the owner of the Red Rocks Mall with Vulcan. A notarized statement from the CEO Vulcan, the landlord, the owner of the Red Rock Shops, and our corporate attorney, Dick Evans, and Michael Koller. And here's the site plan, I'm sure you're all quite familiar. Red Rock Shops is the largest, you know, commercial retail district in the town. We're 120 parking spaces. As you can see, the light-colored, I can, I assume everyone can see my pointer there, that is the Red Rock Shops, right in between Michael's Coffee and the Hair Salon. The site plan security measures are a requirement both for the state as well as the town, obviously. These brown rectangles with an arrow represent all the cameras. So the state requires that all locations, all rooms, all angles, all areas of the site can be recorded on video camera, both inside and out. So you can see, just going to do the basic layout here, I have a next slide which shows the, having trouble here. Oops. Oh, there it is. So I'm going to go back, we need to show the floor plan, but I'm just going to go back to the security plan, so you can see both the security as well as the floor plan, obviously the same thing. As you can see, enter here, there is a little foyer, customers walk in, here are the point of sales, the secure area accessible to only employees is behind the counters here, and we have rooms for storage, secure vault, security, office space, things like that. There is a secure area here with shared bathrooms and then exit out to the back. And here's another shot of the floor plan, which is required. And then here's the facade of the building, which is pretty standard. Dreamer is the name, we're going to do a minor upgrade to what it is now with some nice, you know, surfacing of the front.
I have a question there?
Yes, sir.
So the first, may have been the first slide, there was a large D in between the windows, so it just looks like there's a discrepancy in your two pictures of what the front will look like.
Yeah, that's correct, and I apologize, I really, I left this up on the first slide. The town bylaw of Southampton requires or allows precisely two signs for all retail. You can have one sign, which would be Dreamer, and on the facade of the building, and you're allowed a secondary sign at the pole, which would be at the street. This sign here is the over 21 and only sign.
Yes.
And I apologize, I left this. So in our submittal, as I'll go through, and you can see the discrepancy, thanks for pointing that out. As you can see, I've actually blocked that out, because this is the technical bylaw compliant plan for the signs.
Yeah, in order to doubt, at the last meeting, that was, it was mentioned, so thank you.
That's right, thanks. And as you can see here too, say, this is just the plan showing the size, 13 feet letters here for Dreamer, and we've taken out the logo of that other sign. Another aspect of the bylaw that's required is traffic study. So we're compiling data from National Traffic Institute of Traffic Engineers. Nationally, there is a category now for retail cannabis stores. This is the 500 square feet average proposed trips. So as you can see, the Dreamer is 1,000 square feet, so you're going to take these below numbers that you see, and those are essentially double. So the weekday proposed AM peak hours, so this is the morning commute, you have roughly 10 customers per hour, five customers in, five customers out. Weekday PM afternoon commute, on average, 20 customers per hour, that's 10 in, 10 out. Saturday tends to be a little higher, people have a little more time, nine customers in, nine customers out. So again, when we do traffic studies, these are averages, we do anticipate, you know, when this first opens, it may be a little higher. I spoke to a traffic engineer yesterday who confirmed some numbers that we were researching from other shops around the state. And shops like Neta, the larger stores, Neta is a, you know, the very first retailer that was open east of the Mississippi, based in Northampton, they have about 14 pointed sales versus our three or four pointed sales. You know, they're going to have more in the 40 to 50 customers per hour on average. But other places, Caroline's Cannabis is a similar spot, that's about 1,000 square feet or smaller, has around 15 to 20 customers per hour. So once they open, things settle, those are the averages. Now keep in mind, we have about 40 to 50 retailers across the state that are open currently, but there are over 160 retailers in the licensing pipeline. So it's anticipated that even if the customer flow is currently higher than average, as those retailers get open across the state and various locales, that those trips will actually reduce a little bit. Just a comparison, you know, a typical Dunkin' Donuts is 100 trips per hour. So that's coffee, you know, as we say in the industry, coffee, people get it every day, alcohol, customers tend to get it once a week, cannabis, customers tend to purchase that about once a month. So here's our line queue plan, that, you know, regardless of whether we feel that, you know, that there's not going to be significant lines in this store, it's important that we have both a plan for the line as well as, you know, acknowledging COVID restrictions. So you can see here on the left, a six-foot separation. What's nice about this retail store, and great that Southampton has allowed for a retail in the commercial retail district of the mall here, is that a nice wide sidewalk area, 10 feet by almost 30 feet, so even with COVID restrictions, you can have one, two, three, four, five people outside the store, and about five people in the store at a time, as well as customers who, you know, so essentially, we will have a person stationed outside of the building, who can both check IDs and monitor the line, make sure that people are social distancing. And if anyone is stepping off that sidewalk area into the parking area and the road, they would just ask that person to wait in their car until there's more room in the line. Now, the software is also quite sophisticated in terms of ordering and placing your order. You know, cannabis is not the first industry to have high-volume sales, restaurants, and other industries where they require both, or they allow things like online ordering, which we can do at the store, so someone can wait in their car, put their order online, and then get a buzz or a text message when it's time for them to get in line, or if they're scheduled for pickup. And you can do, have communication in terms of making sure that the lines are controlled. Now, in the event, and I'll go into this a little bit more later, but in the event that we would have more people, if any of you have driven by Neta, the dispensary, the large dispensary in Northampton, they have off-duty police officers who are, you know, directing traffic, making sure that people are staying out of the roadway, the parking spaces are being utilized. We do not anticipate that. The data and the evidence of these smaller stores like Dreamer do not show that large lines are occurring, this is not a huge dispensary like Neta. But, you know, just an aside here, the town of Northampton, the off-duty police officers have earned over a million dollars a year in off-duty traffic management for Neta, so it can also be a boon to their economy as well.
I'm going to jump in with a question, Ezra, this is Cindy, regarding the queue you just had there. Who, given that you don't anticipate the same kind of volume as Neta, who's going to monitor the queue to make sure that stays within the predicted numbers and that they stay within their six-foot COVID rules? And who are the, who is the person that's going to do that? Where will others wait if it turns out that there's eight, 10, 12 people in line? And who is going to check IDs on the age of the individuals who might be doing an online pickup?
Yeah, thanks Cindy, that's, those are great questions. So, and forgive me if I don't remember all of them, but I'll start with a simple answer, who's going to be monitoring out here? So typically, what dispensaries throughout the state are doing currently due to COVID restrictions, it's preventing the standard, you know, occupancy rates of these establishments obviously has gone down, because they have to maintain six-foot distancing. So an employee of the establishment will be outside, they just sit out there or stand out there. And so as you can see here, number two, this person is the next one, they're on deck, right, to come into the foyer online. We would have a person standing here, standing in this area, who is both greeting customers, making sure that they have their identification ready when they enter the store, directing them both to the menu as well as the online ordering. So if you can imagine your number six, by the time you get in the store, if you have a smartphone on you, you can have your order in. You place it online, you do have to enter your, you know, your birth date and your information online, but you cannot make the purchase. You actually get, so this number six person, they enter their order online, when they get up to this on deck in here, their ID is checked, but once they enter the store, even when they go to pick up their order, the point-of-sale person needs to check that order. You cannot hand over a sealed bag with cannabis product to a customer without checking their ID. So in every case right now, IDs are checked twice. You check the ID when they enter the store, you check the ID when you make your final purchase. If, in the event of 12 people in line, as you mentioned, this person who is monitoring as, and keeping people in distance, and we, you know, are intending to make sure that that person understands what a six-foot distance is, pretty simple in this case, four people can be lined up here. That seventh person will be, it will be explained to them, you know, if you wouldn't mind, here is the menu, here's the link online, would you please wait in your car? And when there is a spot available in that sixth spot, then you may step out of your vehicle and come up in line. And luckily, you know, the way that the mall is set up, you know, they don't have to go around the back of the building to get in their car, their parking spot is going to be close by, they're going to be able to see the line. Was there another question, Cindy, in there that I missed?
Yeah, it sounds like it's possible to go online, you know, an hour before you're going to show up in the Red Rock Shops and put your order through, and please clarify for me, is it a situation where if you put your order in online an hour before you show up, you go in, you still have to stand in this queue and then show your ID, or like restaurant pickup, you just show up and say, hi, I'm Cindy, yes, where's my fish fry? And, or is that not the case? Do you still have to go in to pick up if you've done the online ordering?
Yeah, that's a good question. That is, the monitor outside would allow that. So if you have not put in your order, you wait in line. And it doesn't mean necessarily that people haven't gotten to it. Sometimes people want to go in and they want to look at the display cases and have a deep conversation with the clerks there and discuss products, et cetera. Some people know exactly what they want. So this monitor would say, you know, you could step into number six position, the monitor would greet you, you'd say, I've already made my order pickup. The monitor is going to have an iPad there or some device that will allow them to see it. They'll say, oh, okay, are you, you know, your order number is 127, what is your name? Okay, let me see your ID. You may go in and pick up your order. And so typically what we'll do in that case is, we'll have perhaps the last point-of-sale that will be the pickup area, so that person can move in, making sure that they're maintaining their social distancing. And even though there's a monitor outside, especially in the first weeks or months of operation, you're going to have a secondary person, a greeter, inside the floor plan. That person will say, are you here for online pickup, or are you here to speak with a sales clerk? The person who's here, who's already created their online order, they will be directed through here to the pickup area. The sales clerk behind the desk will check their ID, double-check that their order is the correct one, and then we'll hand them their prepackaged order, and then they'll leave the establishment. So they will be able to go in the line a little faster.
So just to confirm, no one will have a bag brought to them on the curb and just handed to, oh, you're Cindy, you ordered this. They'll have to get in the queue, they'll have to get their ID checked, they'll have to go through the whole procedure, even if, even though they know exactly what they want to order. There isn't like, in a restaurant situation where they bring the order out to the curb?
That's a really good point, Cindy, you bring up, because originally, so say, you know, eight months ago, the state required all customers to enter the store. It was not allowed for a sales clerk to bring a bag out to a customer. However, during the first months of COVID restrictions, the commission, Cannabis Control Commission, the CCC, did allow curbside pickup. So you still had to go through the same process, check your ID, et cetera, but they weren't, the sales clerk was allowed to bring a bag out to a customer, they picked it up, not out of their car, they did have to park their car, step out of the car, come up onto the sidewalk there, and grab the bag and leave. So, you know, the answer is a maybe, right? We do only what the commission allows right now, because people can enter the building and enter the retail floor plan area. The requirement would be, you have to enter the store, grab your bag, get your ID checked, pay for it, and then leave.
So therefore confirming, there won't be a curbside pickup, it'll, everyone will have to go into the store, show their ID, pick up their bag, pay for it, even if they did the online order, is that correct?
That is correct, unless the commission changes the guidelines to what it was in March, where they allowed the stores to be open, but no one could be in the store. So in that case, they did a, they did a, essentially curbside, the package was brought out to the customer.
Okay.
Can I ask a follow-up question really quick? So let's say they changed the rule back, how would the town be notified of that, such that, you know, the, like, the chief of police would know that that is now an acceptable practice? I don't know how that, this is a new type of business for us, how does that information get flown down to the town?
Yeah, that's a really good question. I, you know, so essentially, there is a chain of communication. The retail establishment has to be compliant with the latest regulations from the state. Their communication is very robust and effective, so, you know, they're, they both make phone calls and email and, you know, blanket news notifications for any change in regulations. Now, there is not a state regulation that requires the retailer to notify the town of any change of state law in terms of the cannabis, you know, retail sales. However, you know, I would say it certainly behooves, and in our, speaking with the police chief, it behooves us to just be in really continual conversation and communication with the police chief about any change, about any potential events that might alter the plan that we're presenting here, or affect public safety in any way. So, you know, we would make every effort to communicate that to the town. This is such a high-stakes business that we're certainly not going to start doing curbside pickup, you know, walking out to the curb with a, with a bag and handing it to people without going through the exact protocol that's required of state law, as well as local requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Continue, Ezra.
Thank you. So one of the aspects of the bylaw is an odor control plan. Typically, so the odor from cannabis is made from terpenes, these are non-cannabinoid volatile compounds. These are non-cannabinoid volatile compounds that come from the plant. I'm sure you've all heard about it, if not smelled it firsthand. Hemp produces it, cannabis produces it, marijuana produces it. There is no THC or CBD or any cannabinoids in the odor of the plant. So the odor, the odor that you're smelling from the plant, cannabis plant, is identical to the odor from a rosemary plant, from a citrus tree, et cetera. These are very common. A pine tree produces pinene, just like cannabis produces pinene. But the odor is, it can be quite strong. Typically, a retailer is going to have, the vast majority of the products come prepackaged. It makes for much simpler shipping, packaging, labeling, et cetera. But there's, it's also, the industry has been taking care of odor for decades. And it's very simple. You just have a, a, what's called a reverse pressure where any air that goes into the retailer through the split mini vent or any venting gets drawn in. But any air directed out of the building would go out the back through a vent, through a carbon filter. Carbon filters are very stringent, very, can very easily take care of the odor. What do I have here? Yeah, so carbon filter comes into the entrance point only. So customers do appreciate, you know, when you're going to a winery, when you're going to a herb shop, you don't mind, a candle store, whatever it is, you want to smell the odors, but other people around may not. So inside the store, you can still take part in the aromas, but it doesn't leave the store unless it's filtered forces the air and it's prepackaged. One of the requirements of the Southampton bylaw is to present to the town all of the state SOPs, the standard operating procedures for establishments. So this bullet list here is what my team creates and created for Vulcan and what we pass through provisional licensing. These are all plans, you know, restricting access to age 21 or older and prevention of diversion. These are the plans that the establishment presents to the state following their regulations for labeling, for educational materials, for seed to sale tracking, for video surveillance, et cetera. Everything, storage of marijuana requires provisions for prevention of mold, security provisions, inventory procedures, et cetera. Transportation of marijuana and locked vehicles and certified agents, locked bins, inventory procedures, quality control and testing, dispensing procedures, record keeping, maintaining your financial records, qualifications and trainings for the employees and security. Those are all, have been submitted to the town as well as passed through the state licensing board. Marketing and advertising is required as well in the bylaw. So the state, the marketing is extremely strict. Essentially, you are not to jeopardize public health in any way, welfare or safety in any way through your marketing or advertising. And you cannot advertise to individuals younger than 21 years old. So radio, television, things like that. You have to essentially prove that your advertising is only to adults. Now, I'm going to just jump on this one in case anybody has seen the billboards. Everyone in the industry was quite surprised when we saw, we started to see billboards advertising these dispensaries because how are they proving that they are 20, that they are serving clientele 21 years or older? So essentially, these, the people who run these billboards, these are private companies. They have data. I guess everyone on 91, they're determining to be at the percentage of the, of the consumers driving on 91, for example, are over 21 years. The CCC is not able to necessarily regulate these advertising companies. But marketing advertising plan is very strict. Essentially, anyone who's looking for cannabis is going to go through the online app, applications as well as Google, Yelp, things like that, that just show these shops. So once they show them, you click on the website. You have to prove that, you have to click yes, that you are 21 years or older. And then you can see the branding, the educational materials and the menu that's on that website. But magazine, advertising, television, radio, things like that are essentially prohibited. Waste disposal is very important. It's also part of what Southampton requires. Waste disposal is also a state plan. Cultivation, processing can produce a lot more. In a retailer environment, you essentially do not have cannabis waste. You have the waste that's typical for a, any retail store, some packaging, you know, the lunchbox of your employee, things like that. If it is marijuana waste, which is very rare, you know, the only case, the only incident where you might have marijuana waste would be if something falls on the ground for something, for example. So if a marijuana product falls on the ground or an edible or something breaks open and falls on the ground, there are very strict guidelines for how it gets rendered unusable. So it's very simple. You have a, you know, everyone knows what a pot brownie is. You know, a pot brownie typically would be incredibly well packaged, but say it were to fall on the ground and it was rendered unusable. So this packaging, as well as the product, would be broken up with sand, coffee grounds, things like vinegar, and mixed in with trash. It renders it completely unusable. This trash is then kept by the manager in a sealed specific trash can and is delivered directly to solid waste disposal facility. So even if there is marijuana waste in the facility, it doesn't get thrown out in the back dumpster. It has to be taken straight to the facility. Energy inefficiency and conservation. A retail store is not going to use any more energy than your typical retail store. But the guidelines, we do also have to follow the state guidelines for energy uses, usage, which are very strict. We have to have very specific plans for what kind of energy usage and reduction measures we are implementing, what measures we are intending to implement and researching and, and how we're going to implement the plan ongoing. So essentially, a retail store, all we can do is things like, you know, reduced energy usage, lighting, making sure to have sensors that turn off lights when rooms are not in use. We'd love to throw, you know, panels on top of the mall, but that's not our jurisdiction, but we'd certainly hope that the landlord would be amenable to that. Now, decommissioning the retail establishment, this is very common for larger industry. You know, you don't want industry opening up and then taking off and leaving something behind. This is of course concern for marijuana. The state does require that a bond in the amount of the license. So the yearly license for a retail, it was in the previous regulations was 5,000. They've recently bumped it up to $10,000. So there is a $10,000 bond for the state that Dreamer has already established. And this is a state requirement. Southampton doubles that or requires its own municipal bond. So we just made it in the amount of $10,000 to double the state bond. So essentially, this is, in the event that, you know, this establishment is left without any one to take care of any products there. The vault for this store is about 70 square feet. So if you can imagine a room that's seven feet by 10 feet, you know, you can fit the products of that vault into a couple 55 gallon barrels. So in the event that the vault is completely full, you would need to bring in agents who would render all of that cannabis unusable, as I described in the waste disposal plan. And they would bag it up and bring it to a, to a waste facility. So, you know, I have in the, in the narrative, a breakdown, you know, buying the bin, purchasing the sand or coffee grounds and things like that, paying the workers to bring it to the facility. You know, I imagine this to be a one day job. I'm not sure that $10,000 is necessary, but we want to have over the amount, not under. And in this case, we have double, we have $20,000 to take care of that.
All right, Ezra, question?
Yes.
The, the original bond I saw was only for 10. Do you have an additional bond that I haven't seen?
So the state bond is a bond that is required to reach provisional license. That is the bond that's submitted to the state. The Southampton special permit submittal requirements do require a local bond. So we did, I believe, oh, did we send that bond Vulcan? Maybe we didn't get that bond here. Is this Larry?
Well, yeah, the one I saw, so that's the 10,000 to Southampton. We don't get a copy of the one to the states if not necessary, correct?
It is not required, but it's certainly not a problem. I'm happy to email you the bond.
Larry, did you have a comment, Larry?
No, my point was we do have one for the town.
Okay.
That's really, that's really what you're concerned about.
Okay, question then Ezra, probably for you. How are the 3% fees paid? And if there was any, say for instance, the store went out of business, how does the town recover fees? Are they, are they from a past month or past quarter? How are they paid? And how would the town ensure that they got fees from a previous period on sales?
That is a good question. Let's see, so the host agreement, and correct me if I'm wrong, Larry, I have not read it for quite some time, possibly over a year. Typically, what towns do is they, they require quarterly payments. And the, the way the booking works or the books work for this is that because of the metric system, the software system that the state uses to monitor the sales of these retails, it's, it's available instantaneously what the sales are and therefore what that 3% would be. So as you reach that quarterly mark, you can see, okay, you know, say it's, say it's $5,000, then the, that would get paid. If the store closes down and the owner is not available, this, that is a very good question. I don't suppose I have the answer to that other than the very last sale of the retailer is going to be recorded and that tax is taken out. So, and this is also, you know, perhaps why the bond might be helpful is that, that, that could cover it. But essentially, the state is monitoring the sales and can keep track of exactly what is owed to the town on an instantaneous or minute to minute basis.
Could I just add to that just briefly? Go ahead. Okay, which is, that's an agreement that's negotiated with the Board of Selectment. So that falls under their purview. And that really isn't something that falls under the planning board's purview or really enters into the conversation relative to the special permit application. And I guess I would just say if there is an issue or a problem with them going, you know, out of business and the town having to collect the due on that, that's the selectmen's problem.
Right, thanks Larry for, for pointing that out. You're right, it has nothing to do with this application. Go ahead Ezra with your presentation.
Thank you. So findings from the bylaw, there's sort of two sections of the findings, both from the adult use specific bylaw to marijuana for the town of Southampton as well as any findings that relay back to the general Southampton bylaw. So, A, that the marijuana establishment is consistent and does not derogate from the purposes and tenet of those zoning ordinance and bylaw. So we're going through that now. And that both the design and any visuals, any economic impacts do not deter from any butters or other parties of interest. So, you know, I did some research on this to make sure because I realized that for some people, this is subjective. This is a new era, the legalization of marijuana. Some people feel that the shops are just, they derogate no matter what. They just don't want them there. So however, we have a, both a legal regulated plan. It has been legalized, it has been medically recognized in the state of Massachusetts since 2012, legalized for adult use in 2016. So we're going on four years of legalization over a half a billion dollars of sales legally to the state of Massachusetts. Not a single security incident, no evidence of economic impacts or, you know, other aspects, increased crime, things like that. Now, the master plan, and I think Southampton was very forward thinking in comparison to a lot of municipalities in allowing retail sales to occur in the retail district of the town. A lot of towns relegate them to sort of obscure industrial areas that might be a little less amenable to consumers. And the master plan says we want to grow the municipal tax base and we want to protect the rural character of the community. So I think this retail store, being at the Red Rock Shops, of course, it's going to increase the tax base. It is the only industry that both has a 3% tax to the town as well as 3% impact fee to the town. And it's a, in the commercial district. This is not in a rural area of the town, which maintains Southampton's rural character. It is also, needs to meet or exceed all the permitting requirements. You know, we are properly zoned. We have submitted all of our required paperwork. And this is for you to determine, but we feel we're, we're meeting the requirements. And we're also applicable, compliant with all state laws. You know, also very rare for a town to require an entire provisional license before submitting for a special permit. When you get a provisional license, that means you are bona fide licensed on paper. You have submitted all of your background checks. You have submitted proof of funds. You have submitted all of your SOPs and security operations, et cetera. So we hold a provisional license as you saw before. We also have to satisfy any conditions of other sections of the bylaw. So I appreciate Larry for getting granular on this. He saw section X 10, 2, paragraph A, any conditions and safeguards from the standard Southampton bylaw. And this is, falls within table one use regulations. So this is zoned, the adult bylaw zones this in retail, the commercial district, C district, and Red Rock Shops is the largest commercial district. And it's in harmony with the purpose of the bylaw. The purpose of the bylaw, we want to avoid undue concentration of population. So this is, you know, I think there's about 1,000 cars a day that go to the stop and shop. The mall itself has over 120 spots. So it's a really good place if we're talking about a concentration of population. I'm sure many of you have seen the Harley Davidson rallies when there's hundreds of Harley Davidson motorcycles in the parking lot. So we feel that the retail is going to be a much quieter impact on the area. And then it's an appropriate use of the, of the town. So it's a pretty basic, it's a retail store in a retail shop. There's a couple vacant storefronts in Red Rock. So we're happy to fill one of those vacant stores. Also, that it's not detrimental to the public convenience or welfare and that there's not undue traffic congestion or pedestrian safety issues. So, let me go through that. So, you know, detrimental to the public convenience or welfare? Public convenience, if you are a consumer over 21 in the town of Southampton, you can conveniently purchase legal cannabis in your town when the store opens. This is also taking law enforcement away from illegal cannabis sales in the town and allowing them to, you know, provide their services towards other crimes. So, you know, from our perspective, this is actually increasing the welfare of the town. Creating undue traffic congestion, you know, as I mentioned in the, in the data on traffic, it's it's, we've had some news events with these first one, two, three shops that opened in the state. But the shops that are opening now are very in line with these averages. The, the traffic is not backed up. Pedestrian safety is on point. I think we have a pretty solid line. And I'm really happy that we have parking spots right there. You can wait in your car safely, well lit. You can see that line going into the store. You can have a monitor or we will have a monitor outside of the building speaking to consumers.
I have a traffic question. So now might be a good time to take it. So when Red Rock Shops was created, I'm sure they calculated, you know, number of cars and decided, oh, well, we don't need a stoplight here. Does this industry or this, sorry, this, this extra business, does that still keep the entire Red Rock Shop traffic under the limits which would require a stoplight?
That's a great question. And, and you know, luckily it's math. So typically, or I won't say typically. In this case, that highway, I believe, talking to a traffic engineer, we're talking seven, 10 to 17,000 cars a day. And when we have a, a shop, you know, let's average it out to 200 cars a day. If you add a retail store in this case, you know, say 20 visits per hour, 10 hours a day, for example, would be 200 extra visits. So 100 visits in, 100 visits, visits out. So those 200 additional vehicles going onto that road and coming off are still far less, they're less than 1% of the traffic that is passing on that road. So that's actually, you know, I'm not a traffic engineer myself, but I think when they're making those calculations, if they measure, I don't know how many shops there are. Say there are 10 shops in Red Rock Shops, 2,000 cars a day, you're still very low in terms of the numbers of cars that are on that road that are going into the, the big Y there. So I think that.
That makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Paul for Paul? No, Paul? Is Paul there?
Yes, I'm here.
Yeah, have you, you want to comment on that for Dan's sake?
Well, it's, it's going into an existing facility that, that's, that, that had a vacant spot that, that's going into. So it doesn't necessarily add any additional traffic that wasn't, you know, and I'm not going to use the word permitted it, but you know, that facility was certainly, you know, made for that type of use. So it's not like they're, they're building on that site to expand for another, you know, 1,000 or 2,000 square feet, depending on whatever they're, they're doing. So it's in the grand scheme of what's, what's in that existing use.
Yeah, and they mentioned there are other vacant places in the, in the shops anyways, so.
That's correct. And we'd also hope, you know, common sense. You, you stop by, you go, you drive into the Red Rock Shops, as I'm sure you all have. You grab your, your meal at the Chinese restaurants. You grab a cup, a cup of coffee for Michael's Coffee. You get your haircut and then you grab your, your 21 and over product at the, at Dreamer. So, you know, this is the point of a retail area where you, you, you park your car and you go, go to multiple stores. That's what helps business for our neighbors as well. Overloading any public utilities? Again, very standard retail, far less than what used to be in this spot of, you know, a typical hair salon is going to use a factor of 10 more water that we're going to use. We're using water to wash hands of our employees. And then any special provisions, section 11 is all about cluster development, new development of land, industrial land development, multifamily dwellings or home occupation businesses. So this does not fall within any of those. So we pass those special provisions as well. And that we're not impairing the integrity or character of the district or detrimental health and such, health, safety and welfare. Little bit of overlap, overlap here between the marijuana adult use bylaw as well as the, the town bylaw. You know, this, this presentation is a little easier for me because this is a retail store going into a retail mall in a retail location. So this is the district. These are the adjoining zones. Health and safety and welfare. You know, this is the largest commercial retail district in town. Marijuana is legal, has been for four years. It's a highly regulated industry. Just like a liquor store, you know, when you walk in to a retail, you purchase your product, you show your ID. It is given to you in a tamper resistant container inside of a bag stapled with a receipt. It is illegal to open that bag in the parking lot inside of your car. It's absolutely illegal to consume it in public. And this is also a, an industry where, yes, we have a black market industry. Yes, we have college students and various people who, who have been consuming for years and years. The regulated industry in marijuana are the consumers who have, who are, want to abide by the law, who have been waiting for cannabis to become illegal so they can buy legal, safe, regulated, tested product. And they also have disposable income. The, the price point of regulated cannabis is higher. You, you have a 23% tax. So we feel that this actually, and, and there's also evidence, just to get a little geeky on it, because of the security provisions, there's actually a huge wave of cases across the country of, you know, security events that happened in areas, malls, et cetera, where the law enforcement used the security footage from retailers because it's so robust to actually catch criminals. You know, I, I haven't scrutinized, but I don't believe any of the retail stores at the mall have security cameras, possibly the, the grocery store down on the corner. But this will actually increase the security and safety profile of the retail store, of the retail shops. And here are a nice segue into security measures. So state compliance is rigorous. You know, I always use the quote from my friend David Oles, who is, works at American Alarm, who provides security for 30 or 40 of these establishments. He says he provides security for self-defense or national defense companies in the state of Massachusetts. The security is nowhere near as robust as the marijuana industry. Every square inch of the retail facility has to be on video camera. Every single moment that the cannabis is, comes into the store from the vehicle, gets put into inventory, comes out into the display cases and goes into the hands of a consumer and then out to the parking lot is captured on, on videotape. There are rigorous requirements for locking doors and keypad entry, break glass sensors on windows, et cetera, et cetera. We also, you know, it is a stipulation of the, of the host agreement with the city that if there are any security issues in this establishment, we are in violation of our host agreement. If there are any security issues that don't comply with state law, we are shut down. It, it behooves us in our business and in our relationship, both with the municipality and the state, to comply 100% and comply with all the regulations.
Can I ask a question now about security?
Yeah.
How, how long are the security tapes kept? And where are they kept? And who has access to them?
So the, it's a good question. The state law requires 90 days of recordings. So if an event occurs, say, for example, you know, that pot brownie we spoke of falls on the floor, doesn't get put into the inventory. A week later, we determine that there's something missing from the inventory. They don't have a record of that sale, even though we have a record of it coming into the facility. The state that is monitoring that sale gets a red flag and they can come to the site and scrutinize the video cameras. And they will capture, they will find where that pot brownie fell onto the floor. It is stored on site so that there.
There are five second rules?
Not in the marijuana industry. No, you are welcome to take that edible home and you can propose any rules you'd like as long as you keep it in a locked cabinet. It's my recommendation. So it, the state requires that a, an inspector from the state can come to the facility and see a recording of the security footage at the site. So, you know, we have a security room where the server is, is kept behind locked doors. That's where there's TV monitors there. So they can just pull up a date, a time, a video camera and see that. The technology also allows for, you know, the owner, the manager can have it on their smartphone. So they log in with their secure password code to the, the website where the application that's controlling the footage is available and they can see the cameras. When these facilities started opening, you had some police departments that wanted a direct, you know, wire cable from the facility into the monitors of the police station. And they quickly realized that, you know, with multiple shops, they would be having too many monitors. But now they realize they can just log into the computer. They can access the, the security footage at any time. So law enforcement, if they get a, a call, they log in, they can see the cameras live, see what's happening over at the facility. So it's accessible to the owner. It's accessible to the security company. It's accessible to the state. And if the law enforcement, local law enforcement chooses, we're happy to give them access to it. We will provide it, you know, they don't have to use it. Police chiefs view it differently. Some view, some prefer not to have access to that security, feeling that that's a security breach and some prefer to have access to it.
Is there any signage in the store that said, that says, you know, there are security cameras, you're on tape? You know, smile, no?
Well, that's a good question, Cindy. So I would have to look at the regulations. So my recollection of the regulations is that it is not required to notify. But, you know, we do have laws. I think, I believe that's a law. I'm not an attorney, so don't quote me on it, that you have to notify public that they're on tape. However, there are cameras outside the building. There are cameras inside the foyer. There are cameras on every single point of sale. So we will make sure that there are signs, but it will be quite clear.
Okay, good, thanks.
Are we doing on time Ezra?
Um, let's see, I, I'm on slide 30 and I believe I have two slides left.
Go for it.
Thank you. This is just, I, I just wanted to show you, you know, what a retail store newly opened. This picture was taken last month in a very similar sort of strip mall environment at peak. So during lunchtime. So as you can see in the corner there, that's Colonial Cannabis in Northampton. There is one person checking IDs. There is one person who is getting their ID checked and one consumer that's walking up to it. So as you can see, this, even though the store opened a month ago, it's not inundated with hundreds of people. And then this is the last slide. Just want to give you a sense of our timeline here. You know, sometimes boards think, okay, we're going to vote on this. And then, you know, tomorrow I'm going to walk over or walk over there and there's going to be a pot shop open. Not so fast, you know, we got to get through the special permit. We have to secure building permits. Additional operations documents are required for the state and for submission, a submittal of architectural review by the state. They have to come, schedule an inspection, which can take a few weeks, possibly a month. They get it inundated. If they find a single thing wrong, that you fail and you have to reschedule, you have to fix the problem and reschedule the inspection. Once you've passed those inspections, you've submitted all your documentation for architectural review, you get a vote on the license. The five panel commission has to vote on your, on your license based on the recommendations of the inspectors. That can take an additional month or two to get into the vote. Then, once you get a final license vote, you have a license on paper and you have a licensed, you have a facility that's licensed on paper. Then you get final inspections. They want to see that you have your employees trained. They want to see, your employees have to be trained by a third party for a specific amount of time according to regulations. Then you have to train them in your point of sale. Then you develop your supply chains with regulated, provide, you know, wholesalers. You bring product into the store. You are not allowed to sell anything yet. You schedule a final inspection, which can take two to four weeks. They come in, they then inspect all the tagging, all the tracking. They have you walk through your point of sale system. They, you know, scrutinize the background documents of every single employee. And then they give you a commence operations. So as I always like to say, getting a special permit and a provisional license is like getting to base camp at Mount Everest. This final build out inspections, security, training, hiring staff, more inspections, final vote and commence operations is getting from base camp up to the peak of Mount Everest. So we still have a ways to go. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you Ezra. That was very enlightening on this industry. Now I'm going to ask Larry Smith, who did the consulting on this. And Larry also had a, a pre-permit meeting with department heads to go over details before this came to the hearing to finalize and edit things that came up to concern. But I'll let Larry elaborate on that. Larry has been the board consultant for us for a couple of years. Previous to that, he was senior planner at Pioneer Valley Planning. Larry Smith.
Thank you. Yeah, on August 27th, we conducted our departmental review meeting. Participating in that were myself and from the town, but included the public health director, the police chief, the fire chief, the building inspector, zoning enforcement officer and the highway superintendent. And we had also, the water superintendent was not able to attend, but he did pass along his comments that he had no issues with this project. And from a water consumption point of view, that makes a lot of sense. I will say that I thought the application was really well put together. And I think it was really complete. There were some I's and some T's that we had to address, which were dealt with promptly. In particular, we had them add an additional, the extra security camera to the back entrance of the building. We had them add the dimensions for the signs on the plan and also to eliminate one of the wall signs. And that was required from zoning. And as Ezra properly pointed out, just about every business in that plaza has two wall signs, including the businesses on either side of this. I can't speak to that because I can't explain that other than the fact that the current zoning bylaw that we have does allow commercial businesses to have two signs, but they restrict, limit it to being one wall sign and one freestanding sign. So I'm not sure if there was an old sign regulations these other businesses spell under or if they just kind of got a bonus of a second sign. But under the existing zoning, they are not permitted to have two wall signs. There was also a fair amount of discussion about the queuing, especially during the COVID requirements with the social distancing that were required. And we just wanted to make sure that in fact, people could be accommodated within the sidewalk area and not have to back out into the travel lane because you only had about a 10 foot of distance there. So they were able to put together a plan for that. And I think them having, you know, limited to six people standing outside and everybody else, you know, gets to wait in their car, I think makes a whole lot of sense. and everybody else, you know, gets to wait in their car, I think makes a whole lot of sense. I think, also looking back, I think a lot of people's vision of the waiting lines at these facilities go back to the Neta facility that opened in North Hampton, which was historic in terms of the lines it had and the amount of vehicles that it had. But of course, at that point, that was the only facility in this half of the state that had to service everybody. And as subsequent retail operations facilities opened up in East Hampton and additionally in North Hampton and the area, those lines certainly have diminished. Now, if you go look at Neta site and, you know, bless the millions of dollars that the police got, I don't see the lines there or the car volumes parking there or the traffic there really to warrant that. And I certainly don't think that's going to be required at this facility. Relative to the narrative, we asked them to extend a little bit and include more of the requirements of how they meet the conditions. And Ezra did a nice job on that. They did update their schedule. We did have them add the local bond that they did put in. And they also included their request of hours of operation that the board's going to have to approve. And Ezra, that was eight to eight.
Ezra?
Sorry, I was muted. That's correct. The bylaw says it may not be later than eight to eight. We, our proposed hours are eight to eight. So we, we take the recommendation of the, of the board.
Very good. So that pretty much does it. I mean, they pretty much dotted the i's, crossed the t's. I'm comfortable with the project, don't have any issues to it. We get your back specifically from everybody else who participated in the review from the town, the health director, fire chief, building inspector, et cetera. And none of them had any issues with it. So all of their concerns have been addressed. In fact, many of them had met with the applicant prior to our, our departmental meeting. And so a lot of those concerns they had raised initially have already were addressed at that point.
Yeah, Larry, and I received today an email from police, highway and building, reinforcing what you just said on that, no issues. At this time, I'll ask the board members, do you have any further questions for Ezra or Larry?
I do. I don't know who wants to go first.
Dan, go ahead, you spoke up first.
Okay, so I'll try to ask them, I think, in order of importance. In, in our bylaw, in section 18-10, number one, the purpose, it's, it's rather vague where it says that the facility shall not be located in close, close proximity of minors. And my comment there is, there is a preschool or daycare, kindergarten in that facility as well. So I, reading, because that's so vague, like, what is close proximity? Looking further in the document on page six, so it says not within 300 feet. So I guess my question is, is it within 300 feet of that daycare facility?
If you take a look at the specific wording of the bylaw, when it deals with daycare facilities, it's from kindergarten on.
Yeah.
I believe peanut does not include, is, is anything, everything up to kindergarten? But does that include kindergarten?
So you're saying we should change our bylaw?
No, I'm saying that your bylaws, I'm saying your bylaws consistent with what the state requires.
Do we know the distance?
It doesn't matter.
It's kind of moot, Dan, if it's, only goes from kindergarten up.
It's like 300 feet, so I just did a Google Earth.
No, it's actually on the same parcel, I believe, isn't it?
Yes, it is. It's in the same-
We're talking about parcel. Yeah, we're talking about parcel distance, not building distance. But I will point out that in fact, for the, and this is the anomaly of it, for the medical marijuana facilities, under the state requirements, they are much more restrictive in terms of being located towards, next to daycares and things like that. And for some reason, when they adopted, when they adopted the adult use bylaw, they were not, they weren't consistent.
So I have a question related to this. Paul, you mentioned early on that you contacted the abutters, one of them I assume is the peanuts. Please, number one, confirm with me, are they considered an abutter? Paul?
I believe they are, the, unless they're-
Were they on the list?
On the lease. I can't tell who owns, if it's under a different name, because it didn't go by the business. There's, there's names on here as well as whatever.
Notified, landowners are notified.
I can't hear you?
I said, the businesses are not notified, the abutting landowners are notified. So if the business doesn't own the land, but leases from the land, the building, that business may not have gotten a copy of the notice unless the landowner who did receive it forwarded it on to them.
That's a good, that's a good point, Larry. Well, vis a vis that comment, maybe the owner didn't notify the business, peanuts, and the, did peanuts notify the, their, you know, their, the people that are utilizing that service, the parents of the people who are at peanuts? And did they know about this? And I, I say that because when this all comes to happen, and I, I'm in support of this whole idea, but will I, would I as a, as a mom or a grandmom be really frustrated? They didn't even know that was going to go in there? And I don't know if we as the planning board, you know, sort of have a moral responsibility to make sure that it's been notified, they have been notified.
I, I, I think we're, we're digging into this too deep. I mean, they-
Sorry.
Paul, we've, when we've looked at this provision in the, in the regulations, we had discussed this to, to night's end. This particular item where it's 300 feet from a, and I think, I forget the exact words, but the consensus that the board had basically looked at isolating it to a school facility being, you know, like Norris School or somewhere that, you know, there, there's an educational facility. So daycare facilities wouldn't fit that description in terms of this. And, and frankly, you know, the way that these facilities are mandated to be erected or, or to be built up, I mean, there's no particular symbols or logos that depict, you know, a marijuana leaf or, or things of that nature. You know, it just says dreamer. So it's, you know, if, if, if one of these kids at the, the preschool can read at that age and they see dreamers, they're going to be confused because-
So I guess I would fall back since you say it's not a kindergarten. Back to section 18-10-1, which says it's not located in close proximity to minors, where they're obviously minors. So I think I would interpret it that way.
You can interpret-
That could be minors going into a coffee shop. That could be minors going to their parents.
That could be minors going into the Chinese restaurant that's located two doors down.
But let me add something, because I happened to get my haircut in that hair salon, which is right next door. I have been there, do you like my haircut? I have been there when the daycare people or the people who are working at peanuts have these strollers that have six or eight kids on it. You know, it's common for daycares to do that. They're walking around there. That's fine, but have they been adequately notified that this is coming in here? And secondarily, it's their decision, have they notified the parents that this is coming in here? I, I know that's digging in the weeds, Paul, for God, I realize that.
The parent didn't like it, they can take their kids out of the school.
But the, the question is, do they know it? Do they know it?
Well, it's on the same property, so what difference does it make?
Let me interject here just a minute. Is there anybody from the listening audience there that's on this Zoom meeting from peanuts or any business in that mall present tonight?
Were they notified? Like as in the butter?
I'm asking if anybody listening from the audience does business or is familiar with peanuts or affiliated with it that might have a comment to make if they were online tonight with us to know.
Can I just say something? Can I jump in and say something?
Go ahead.
My name is Vulcan Politho, I'm the owner of Vulcan LLC, hopefully feature Dreamer. As my understanding was, this is something that we did a year and a half ago with our host community meeting. This is what the host community meeting was about before we even started anything. That we did call upon all the neighbors, we did call upon all the abutting businesses to come and voice their concerns, opinions. If, you know, back then, whenever we did this, I believe it was a year and a half ago barely, I, I don't believe anybody had any concern about it. And I, you know, with daycare, they're, they know perfectly well that we're going in there and they didn't raise any concern, my knowledge in a way.
No, and the only thing I'm going to say is that with the bylaws stated, which Larry confirmed, you know, kindergarten and up, and if there should be any issue with this business or any other special permit for that matter that we approve, there's a 15-day appeal period where if there's really any concerns from abutters or interested parties, they can file, file an appeal to have our decision revisited. Any other questions from the board?
I had a couple more questions.
Go ahead, Dan.
So just looking at the first picture, I noticed that it looked, I mean, this is obviously an artist's representation, but it looked as though there were some gravel areas. I just wanted to ensure that there, there's handicapped accessibility.
Yeah, that's going to be removed then.
Oh, the, the gravel part?
Yeah, yeah, that was just the, yes, that's going to be concrete. It's going to be handicapped accessible, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Dan?
So these are the easy ones. The bathrooms are for employees only?
That's correct.
Yep, cool. And the approval process, is it a one-time approval process? Or is there a renewal period after X number of years?
With this board? Process, as far as the state is concerned, Dan, is a yearly approval. So the commission, the five-member commission does have to vote on the renewal of every license yearly upon, you know, when, when, when the 12 months expires. So we, for example, you know, we gained our provisional license in June. So in June of 2021, whether we're open or not, we will have to be voted, voted upon again.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it, Dan?
Well, this is actually something that you can probably follow up with an email about. Because you are the first company to go through this process, it probably would be good to get feedback on if there are any difficulties or any ways that we can make it more streamlined for future businesses. So it's, it's just an open question because you're the first one that-
And there'll be only, and there'll be only a second one. We're limited to two retail in the town.
That was it.
Is there anyone from the public that's on board here tonight that would like to have a comment or a question? Janet, Kevin, Brian? How many more have I got?
Hey, hey, Paul, it's John Martin. I guess my only question is, can we get a copy of this presentation emailed?
Sure, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, yeah, I don't have the PowerPoint that Ezra did. I have tons of paper that's printed on, but that would be great. You could send that Ezra to the Southampton Planning Board email site, then I can forward it along.
Why don't you post it on your email site, on your webpage?
Could do that too. I did post on the My Town Government site with the tonight's meeting. I believe it was the application, which had a lot of this on it. It was a pretty extensive document, but it was on the My Town Government site that I posted with the, the agenda.
Yeah. But, but a lot of that material has been revised since then, that was part of the original submission.
Good point. Do we have any other questions, concerns, comments, conditions that we may? Keith or Paul, Cindy?
I'd say we may want to look at- Go ahead.
Yep, sorry, Dan, thanks, thanks, Dan. This is Keith, Keith Locke, planning board member. Just to state for the record, I, I've read through all the documents that were provided. Saying it was a very thorough application. I appreciate Larry Smith's help with coordinating your various department reviews. So there's been a lot of good discussion, a lot of good questions, a lot of good answers to questions. So at this point, I have no further questions for myself. I'm pretty satisfied with the application and the process that has unfolded here tonight. So I have nothing further, thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Dan, what did you have?
So I took a minute to review other towns in Massachusetts bylaws in terms of grades. And the majority of them include pre-K. So I think it'd be good for us to revisit that in the future, to include pre-K.
Duly noted. Paul, do you have any other questions?
No, I agree with Keith. I think the application was well presented. And I think it, it meets the requirements of the planning board as, as, as published in our regulations. So I have no further questions.
Cindy?
I am still concerned that the people who are the owners of peanuts maybe haven't heard directly from the actual owners of the building. I don't know who they are. And if the building owners were notified of this and as a butters, wonderful. But if the peanuts, the, the business owners haven't been fully notified, and then have they notified the parents? I just wonder as a courtesy, Paul, if whether we as a planning board can say, you know, this public clearing has occurred and we want to make sure you are aware of this. I just think that's a courtesy. And I wonder how everybody else feels about it. I have no issues with how it's gone, with how the regulations have been met. But given that, number one, this is the first time we've done this in our town. Number two, we don't have a bylaw that says under the age of five or under the age of kindergarten, you know, this is excluded. And number three, just as a, just a general comment, I think I would, I think it's a courtesy for us to just let them know that this is happening. That's my thought.
Yeah, I think that-
Go ahead, Larry.
Except that my question would be, are you prepared to do that for every special permit application? So that you're not just singling out this particular one? Because there's a certain set, there's a certain continuity and consistency you sort of need to follow. And, you know, what you have followed to this point is what is required, you know, by the law. And by the law, you're required to notify all the butters. The abutting property owners, you know, the butters, two of the butters, what is it, 300 feet? In this particular case, I'm trying to look it up now. Is this just one parcel? Ezra, do you know?
I believe that is the case.
Vulcan, do you, Vulcan, Red Rock is one parcel that includes peanuts, correct?
It is, that's right. Peanuts is leasing from them. And again, I, I repeat, we, the process of the host community meeting was to address that issue, Cindy. And that was done a year and some months ago.
It was done a long time ago.
Correct. That is particularly designed just for that. So we don't start any of this process, we don't come this far if somebody's against it to begin with.
So Vulcan, do you know who the owner of the building of peanuts is, number one? And number two, has that individual- And number two, has that individual actually spoken to the people who run that business and are they aware of this? If you can assure me of that, then I'll let it go.
I mean, I'm not going to promise you here because I'm not sure what they did, what they didn't do. I know we notified them in the meeting, as again, I'm repeating myself, but a year and some month ago. They were notified and I remember seeing him like briefly. You know, I forgot his wife's name. She's the one who runs Peanuts Care. Brian, maybe you can help me out.
Yeah, it's Fred, Fred and Linda Backteller.
Linda, Linda, yes. And I remember seeing Fred and he was kind of excited about it. I even joked around. I said, we need to cut a deal. What if a single mom or, you know, mom with a kid that, you know, wants to pick up, you know, whatever product that she wants? Can they temporarily drop the kid off to you and, and so that they can comfortably come inside the store? And he was like super psyched and excited about it. Now, did he tell all his customer base? I have no idea.
Okay.
I know Fred well and, you know, so is Linda. They're one of my customers here also. They didn't seem to be have any kind of issue when I talked to them.
Yeah, I mean, I'll chime in. I did just talk to Fred and Fred is aware of that famous, the owner of the Red Rock Shops were the owners. He did inform him and he knows about it. I don't, that's all I know. As well as, I'm not sure if he notified all the parents or sent out a letter. I don't know, but.
The owners know for sure.
Yeah, so I'm going to, yeah, Fred, the owner, they're aware of it.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to accept, I'm going to accept that. That the people who own the peanuts company or the peanuts business are aware of this and I'm going to leave it at that because I don't want to inappropriately set a precedent here as Larry's pointed out that we have a responsibility to notify people. I just think it's a courtesy. That's where it's going.
Oh, I'd say that, do we have a precedent because it's not defined the age?
If I could actually.
Pervview of our bylaw to provide that type of notification. I mean, I think it's been asked and answered. That's well outside our purview to provide individual notification to specific business users.
Okay.
And I think, you know, in the context of close proximity, to me, that would imply that it would be a direct building of butter. I mean, a direct within that particular parcel, within that particular confine of that, of that building inside there. So, if it was right where the coffee shop is or where the hair salon is, I mean, that's clearly the way that I would read it.
Just, just for your own notification, the address of this establishment is 15 College Highway, which is a suite number G, whatever. The notices went to 15A College Highway, 10 College Highway, 1816, 53, 4 Coleman Road, 6 Coleman Road and 17 College Highway. So, anybody that was within the Red Rock Shops did not get the official notice. The jewelry store, the coffee shop, the, the other shops that are in there, no one within the confines of that mall got, got a notice and it wasn't required by the, by the budding notice. It would have been probably a courtesy out of the landlord, but as some other people said, they were aware of it. I would expect that if they had some real concerns, knowing that this was coming before us, they'd have been here tonight to voice those concerns. And hearing none, I'm not going to consider that.
I would also, just as a consultant who does many projects like this and is aware that sometimes an owner, you know, of a building that has 100 apartments in it, may be the only a butter that receives the notification. That is not our intention to, you know, to trick anyone because it can be very difficult. So, you know, Vulcan and I, we've spent a lot of time, we've discussed with the jewelry owner and, and various of butters there. And there's been many discussions and I can also confirm that, you know, I always double check with, you know, in this case, the landlord asking, have you spoken to everyone, you know, are there any problems? And it was confirmed to me that there were no problems, you know. I don't have it in writing. I think it's something that's important to bring up, but, you know, this is a project that's been discussed for over 12 months, 14 months about.
Right, and the buzz about town has been around, too.
And just to add on to that, some of those shops were actually looking forward to some more traffic.
Put traffic, sure.
They made some comments, says we definitely need some because.
Well, I appreciate everybody's thorough addressment of my comment. I think it's, I think this was a good discussion, so, so thank you for taking the time to have it.
Thanks, Dan. Any other comments or questions before I, and I believe judging by my board members here that we have all the information, Mr. Smith has done a fine job in seeing to that. But again, I will echo my congratulations to the applicant. That was a very fine presentation, very thorough. We don't get very many like that, but again, this isn't your first rodeo either in this, in this industry.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion or any other comments before I call for a motion?
Yeah, I have another question before you call for a motion. Number one, does this need to go to town meeting?
No.
No.
All right, and number two, is this going to be, is this going to be open on Sundays?
Ezra?
Ezra?
That is a good question. You know, the hours in the bylaw stipulate the hours of the day. They do not stipulate the, the day of the week.
As they don't for any retail operation.
Correct.
I think most of the, most of the ones in the locale, they're open on Sunday from my.
We are looking forward to opening Sundays of the week.
Okay, okay, great. So, I move. Is there more?
Which is, if you believe you want some additional information from them, now's the time to ask for it and you need to continue the public hearing. Once you've closed the public hearing, you've stopped. When you close the public hearing, you basically are saying you've got all the information you need and you really can't get any more information from the public. So, if there's any more information you want, you have to let them know now and then you'd have to continue the public hearing to give them time to give it to you.
I'm satisfied, Paul.
Yes, I, I, I am satisfied.
Keith, you're satisfied, yes?
I'm satisfied and I'll be so bold to motion to close the public portion of this hearing.
I'll second that.
The motion has been made by Keith, seconded by Dan LeBally to close the public hearing. Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, I'll entertain a motion. We want to address this this evening because there is no further information we need to garner from this.
Well, typically you would wait until I submitted a draft decision with conditions.
You want to, you want to.
Unless you want to sit down here, unless you want to sit down here and do it, start doing it cold.
Not, not this evening. You're going to draft them, correct?
Yeah, what typically we would do is you would meet in a couple of weeks and in the meantime, I'll do a draft and get it out to you. And then when you meet, you've got something to work from.
So, that would suggest that I get a motion to continue to our October 7th meeting.
Just to clarify, are we continuing the hearing or just continuing the discussion?
No, we're continuing the discussion to listen to Larry's review and then vote on the application at that time. You've closed the hearing already. I closed the hearing.
And if I may, Larry, if we could, I don't know, I know different talents, different protocols, but if we could request a vote and then you write the draft, that would be a request, did I understand? You have your protocol?
I do it exactly the opposite way because I don't think you can vote on it. You can determine what conditions you want to impose and whether everybody agrees with those conditions. So, I would suggest you do the conditions first and if you're all satisfied with the conditions, then you vote to approve it.
Fair enough.
That's the way you've always done it.
Well, we have a consultant. I would like to listen to our consultant.
Then we will come back here on the 7th for a final draft in the conditions and vote on the special permit at that time.
And you have a problem with me forwarding a copy of the draft to the applicant so that they can have a chance to provide comment on it?
I have no problem with that.
No problem.
Larry, are you aware of any, any conditions at this point in time?
Uh, yeah, probably like you, typically there are like 30.
Okay, anything out of the ordinary with this application or is it just more basic bylaw?
No, there's some, there are some things I think we need to talk about.
Okay.
Isn't mostly just recycling the, the, the regulations we have in town? And then we see adding a few things to it?
No.
All right, everyone. Thank you.
Can I make one comment before?
Go ahead, Vulcan.
Is there any way, now, maybe there is no way, but this takes obviously a process and we've been waiting for a long time. And in order to move through this, we have to go through the building permitting, too. Is there any way simultaneously as we're waiting for the vote, can we apply for the building permitting? Is that something we can do so that we can move the process and start building?
Not before, not before the appeal period, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's.
And, and out of curiosity, if the meeting is closed, but there are conditions that, that are unknown, how do we publicly address conditions as the applicant if the meeting is closed? So, I'm not quite sure the chronology there.
Well, we, in fact, the board doesn't have to give you that option if they don't want to. It's their discretion at a public meeting whether they want to allow you to comment or not.
On the conditions?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, but you are going to forward that to them, correct, Larry?
That's correct. That's, in fact, yeah, that would be why.
Yeah. All right, we're, we're set for October 7th to continue the discussion on the, the review and the conditions that will go with the permit. Thank you all for attending tonight. Planning board members, you can stick around just for another couple of minutes, not very long. Have a couple of items that we have to take care of. So, thank you, Vulcan.
Thank you very much.
Ezra?
Thank you for.
Brian?
Thanks.
I have no building permits tonight. There was nothing in the box when I checked it. Is there any reports of committees? Cindy, did you have any updates for anybody?
Pretty briefly, regarding the Open Space and Recreation Plan, a draft has been completed. We're awaiting one important point and that's the ADA report and I think the town administrator is apparently working on that. It cannot go to the state for review, nor can it go to the public comment period until the ADA portion has been completed. So, that's where I know on that. And regarding the update of the master plan implementation plan, I have some phenomenal news for you. Can you believe this? We had 896, 896 survey respondents. There were actually more, but they were online respondents that didn't complete the survey. And I actually heard that might be over 100. I don't know if they were the same people who then ultimately, you know, completed it or what, but I'm immediately amazingly impressed that our town had so many respondents. We don't have the preliminary report yet. We're going to be meeting next Monday night. I'm just very excited about our town having that much involvement. So, that's my two reports for right now.
Thank you, Cindy. It was brought to my attention after the last meeting that since we went through town election, Dan was voted in. And typically after the town election, we revisit our chair, vice chair positions. We don't have a secretary or clerk that's come forward in recent years. But at this point in time, I'll entertain nominations for chair for the next coming year and vice chair and a recording clerk, if any.
I nominate Paul Demon as our chair.
Second.
Don't I have any say?
No.
Like to make a motion?
You guys trying to flatter me or something? What's going on?
You do a great job.
Who made the motion?
Cindy.
And who seconded?
Mr. Fergel.
Hear that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
How about vice chair?
So, currently is Paul Fergel the chair, vice chair?
Correct.
Paul, do you want to stay in that role? Yeah, good. I nominate Paul Fergel as vice chair.
I second.
Third.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstained.
Does anybody want to do minutes or, I've been doing them unless someone would like to take that out?
What's the status of Catherine?
Oh, God, that's. She had stopped, she's late last year, but it was almost a year ago, maybe November last year, yeah. John, does she, does Kathy still do the select board?
Yeah, she does them remotely.
Okay. It's, it's not a big deal. I get it done. It's just one more thing. I'm not as wordy as some clerks have been in the past, but it's got. And, and now that they're videotaped, somebody's got an issue, they can check the tape, so.
Yeah, I haven't seen any minutes. Maybe I missed a few meetings. Are we, where are we in status review?
I'm up to date except for the last minute that's posted on the website, but I haven't shown anything with this program with Facebook. They're on, they're on the My Town Government site on our page, but I haven't had anything posted here to approve. Which I'll have to get together someday. I don't have any warrants and that's, that's all I have for tonight. So, does anybody want to make a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks for hanging in there, everybody. It was kind of long and drying out. It was a great presentation, but it was lengthy. I had forgotten that we hadn't had something of this caliber in a while, but how Larry likes to do that because I was, I was ready to vote on that permit tonight and get it moving along. But that's not how he deals with it, so, and I respect that. He's, it's the proper way to do it and that's the way we'll do it.
I think this will be a good thing for the town considering we're, you know, we're losing Harley Davidson. We lost the restaurant, which is now going to be a church, so we got to get something back on the tax roll. So, I had looked through the presentation there. Year two, they're estimating upwards of $3 million in gross sales, which would be about $180,000 of the tax coffers to the town of Southampton. So, that would be a huge shot in the arm for the town, much needed shot in the arm for the town, so.
Good point.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody. Take care.
Have a good couple of weeks and I'll see you in two.
Very good.
Say goodnight.
Thanks.
Good night.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye bye. Bye-bye.